... Please all rise and pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the republic of which we are. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country, and we are the leaders of our own nation. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country. We are the people of the United States, and we are the leaders of our own country.[1293.11] Number twenty-two.
Legislative Sassi, Seganga, Sierra, with all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive to accept hazmat equipment on behalf of the Orange County Department of Emergency Services, Fire Services Division, section two one five of the county law.
Second Bureau.
Okay, Legislature Fagio?
Chairman, would you please add my name, sir? Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, number twenty, Carrie. Are you ready? Twenty-three, twenty-four, Gene, go ahead. The, uh, vote, I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Carried. Okay, number twenty-five.
Legislative Tuttel, Tuwi, Sutherland, with all Republicans as co-sponsors. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Department of Social Services to procure services or purchase goods using the least restrictive manner prohibited by law, permitted by law. Excuse me.
Second Bureau.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 What, is it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, no problem. Okay. Minority, yes?
Yeah, just a question. When, when we vote on like twenty-three and twenty-four, we, I think we should read them into the minute, because anybody who's online listening to it.
Yeah, but we never do.
They know, we're not, we're not showing our, our, uh, you know, our information that we're receiving. We're voting on stuff that people don't even know that is maybe, like, too late to hear. It's bad enough that you can't speak with us, but I mean, the fact is that on what we do vote collectively, I mean, if they're all tax sales, okay. I mean, you know, with these types of things, uh, I don't know, I think they're important to be read, and I don't know everybody else, but I think it's important that the people that are listening need it to hear as well.
Gene, would you refer to do that with just a little summary of each, right, to W?
Sure, I can read the titles, but just so you're aware, they are posted online, resolutions and agenda, but I can certainly can read the two.
Yeah, you can either read them or give a little synopsis, just, you know, appropriation of the Department of Emergency Services, if it's in the mouth, maybe give us a, you know, if it's, it's alone, you can give us a synopsis of it, okay?
Want me to read twenty-three?
Well, um, yeah, I guess, well, we just voted on it, but, but, all right, read twenty-three and twenty-four. Just do it.
Twenty-three, resolution making supplemental appropriation to the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Police Services. Number twenty-four, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Police Services to accept and appropriate additional grant funds from the New York State, New York Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
And all Dems who are sponsors on those, right?
Dems are sponsors on number twenty-three, I believe, one?
And twenty-four.
And twenty-four, correct.
Okay, do we know it? And, okay, and they, those resolutions were unanimous, I believe, and number twenty-five, we voted on number twenty-five? I'm losing track here.
Nope. No.
No, we didn't? Okay, so, on twenty-five?
We're trying to get a voice vote.
All in favor on twenty-five?
Aye.
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 Good, no? Okay, carried. And it's, uh, number twenty-six.
Legislative Tuwi, Sutherland, Luhan, and Tuttel, with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to appropriate second-year budget period funds from the New York State Department of Health pursuant to section ninety-nine dash H of the General Municipal Law and section four point zero nine of the Orange County Charter.
Second Bureau.
Okay, discussion. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Carried. Number twenty-seven.
Legislative Fagio, Riskevich, Tuwi, Sutherland, and co-sponsor, Legislature Tuttel. Resolution authorizing an increase in the salary range for the position of home health aide per diem at the Orange County Department of Residential Healthcare Services pursuant to section two point zero two G of the Orange County Charter.
Second Bureau.
Luhan added, please.
Luhan added, okay. The Bureau, um...
Uh, just want to make one mention, uh, I did say it in committee, too, when it came to personnel compensation. I'm voting in favor of the increase from eighteen dollars to twenty-two, twenty-two percent increase, but my concern is that we're sending people, home health aides, into individuals' homes where there's not a mandatory position that they need to be vaccinated prior to that. I would like to see, uh, I've asked a question, been told that people we hired to do that have rights and they can't be mandated to do that, but just the common sense dictates that if we're going to be sending people into people's homes as home health aides, we should be at least guaranteeing that they've been vaccinated and they're somewhat safe as opposed to someone who's elected not to be vaccinated.
Maybe Chairman O'Donnell should put that on as a agenda for discussion, for the discussion. That is next.
Yeah, we did discuss it in P and C, uh, and, uh, the answer there was that we can't mandate that our employees become vaccinated. I think this is a little special situation where we're sending people into other people's homes, most likely the elderly, and people have, uh, health issues. I would certainly want to guarantee that at least our guys going in there are safe.
Thank you.
Or, as possible, you never completely say.
Yeah, no, understood. Understood, definitely.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Chairman.
Uh, it was, it was discussed, it was discussed at the Health Committee also, but doesn't appear to be a solution to this without, uh, us having the ability to mandate people getting vaccinated. It, it's up to the individual homes whether they make it a mandate, don't send me anybody unless they're, uh, vaccinated. So, uh, the only thing we could do is let the people in the homes know that that's their option. You can ask to make sure that the people coming into your house are vaccinated. They obviously have that right. We don't have the right to mandate it, but, uh, homeowners certainly has the right, so maybe we can just have, uh, large drafts, some type of, uh, informational memo that goes to the homeowners, explain to their right.
Yeah, we can handle it.
And run it by law.
That's a good solution to, uh...
Well, they can mandate it, and then, uh, large could have a list of those home aides that have been vaccinated and haven't. It's all voluntary, right, so.
That's probably the best solution we can get for, right?
Yeah, but that, vaccination doesn't guarantee that they, that can't spread the disease, so I don't know what that, you know, what that's going to do.
Maybe more peace of mind.
Well, it's up, it's up to, it's up to the homeowner. Okay, I don't have an issue with that.
The homeowner. Or the patient, yeah. All right, okay, good. Thank you for that. Okay, all in favor?
Steve, Kathy, Kathy Seganga has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd first be added to this bill, and Jimmy kind of covered everything that I was going to speak about, that we should definitely at least make our, um, customers or whoever's using these home health aides, um, given the option of being able to know or opt out of somebody who may not be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, number twenty-eight.
Legislative Fagio and Tuwi with all Republicans as co-sponsors. Resolution recognizing April eighth, twenty-twenty-one as Holocaust Memorial Day, Yom Hashoah.
Second Bureau.
And Mike Paduk, you want to add all Democrats, right?
Yeah, all Dems, so all three of these, please. And just, and just one comment, how easy, how miscellaneous these resolutions get put on, but we're just recognizing something, so I'm okay with that. You didn't go through committee, just to point it out.
Now, I know there were a few, there were a few that were kind of urgent, and Mike Laymore, I would assertly think that you want to add the independents, well, the, what's left of the independents caucus, so...
Thank you. I'd like to have my name added for sure, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I think everybody is on this, if there's, if not, um, clarify?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, voice vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, uh, number twenty-nine, and yeah, some of these, I know there's urgency in their last minute, but at least the fall focus should, should get these in advance of the meeting, if they have it, henceforth. Okay, thank you. Number twenty-nine.
Legislative Sassi, Finelli, with all Republicans, Democrats, and Ebo as co-sponsors. Resolution recognizing April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one through April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one as National Volunteer Wor- Week, sorry.
Second Bureau.
Good. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. Uh, all opposed? Okay, carried. Nannamasa. Okay, number thirty.
Legislative Sassi and Finelli with legislator, uh, Republicans, Democrats, and Ebo as co-sponsors. Resolution recognizing April twenty-twenty-one as National County Government Month.
Second Bureau.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the desk is clear.
Okay, if no further ado, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
She moved.
Second. Cheney, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, ladies and, okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Everybody have a great weekend. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.